Okay, we'll call this meeting to order for June 27th. It's 3:00 PM. We'll begin with the land acknowledgement. So the town of Innisfail acknowledges that we are meeting on Treaty VII territory, the ancestral and traditional territory of the Blackfoot Confederacy, Kanai, Pecani, Sixseka, as well as Sutina First Nation and Stony Dakota First Nation. We acknowledge that this territory is home to the Métis Nation of Alberta Region III within the historical Northwest Métis homeland. We acknowledge the many First Nations, Métis, and Inuit who have lived in and cared for these lands for generations, and we are grateful for the traditional knowledge keepers and elders who are still with us today and those who have gone before us. We make this acknowledgement as an act of reconciliation and gratitude to those territories we reside on. And I also just want to acknowledge that today is multiculturalism Day in Canada, and we certainly acknowledge the diversity that enriches our community, and I'm grateful that we have a commitment as a town council and organization to, that word belonging is one of our core values, and I'll probably say a little bit more about this in roundtable later on. So we will move on to the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Nope, nothing. Okay. Please have someone make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mayor Barkley will make that motion.
Thank you, Councillor Dunham. All in favor? And we'll move on to the minutes, 3.1, the regular council meeting of June 13th. When someone's ready, we'll just have someone please adopt these.
I'll move those minutes. Mayor Barkley.
Thank you, Councillor Bates. All in favor? And then 3.2, the agenda priorities meeting of June 20th. Have somebody make a motion to adopt those, please.
I would make that motion.
Mayor Barkley. Thank you, Councillor Wing. All in favor? Great. And we will move into 4.1, our Waste to Energy with Sean Collins. Are you introducing him, CEO Becker?
Yes, please, Mayor Barkley. Just to give a little bit of context, as I introduce Sean, the town has had several discussions with representatives of Army Energy regarding waste energy concepts, which has resulted in Mr. Sean Collins coming before you as a delegation. And as you'll see within the agenda, there is a request for decision as Army Energy is looking for a letter of intent to further explore a potential development in Innisfail. But I think Sean is best versed to talk about this agenda item and like to introduce Sean publicly to council.
Hi, everybody. Really appreciate the time here today. Do have a short presentation I was gonna run through to just give a bit more background and context. Really appreciate the discussion so far and the time with CEO Becker and administrative staff on this project. And if it's okay with everyone who's gonna do a short presentation, did wanna do a quick time check on how long we've got allotted for this agenda item so we don't go over time?
Normally, we keep our presentations to approximately 10 minutes. Sean, if that works for you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Kara, I believe I'll need screen sharing ability? If that's possible? It says it's currently disabled. There, perfect. Okay. Again, really appreciate the time and the continued conversation with council about the potential of developing a waste-to-energy project within Innisfail. This presentation will all work through fairly quickly just as context and background. Provided this to administration as well. There's interest in distributing it publicly. So, quick background. So, Green Transition Holding, the group that I represent, we're a Norwegian-based developer owner and operator of clean energy infrastructure assets predominantly in the energy-from-waste space within the portfolio of companies. There's a proprietary dual-stage combustion technology, biodistric heating business, and engineering procurement, construction, and maintenance business that is specialized in developing and operating these facilities across Europe. The opportunity associated with waste-to-energy is really driven by both economics and environmental concerns. Right now, landfills are the third-largest source of methane in the world, and there's a significant expected increase in landfill volumes by 2050. This is creating an opportunity for energy-from-waste to be developed. Big opportunity to leverage the experiences and trajectory taken by the European Union as it relates to landfill diversion. We joke that this is one of the few environmental graphs that seems to be going in the right direction, but this is a map of what's going, what's occurred in the European Union over the last 20 years as they set 10% landfill divert, 10% landfill target by 2035. They've nearly achieved that to date, which has resulted in a significant increase in recycling and composting as well as waste-to-energy facilities. The core solution that we're presenting is the development of a waste-to-energy facility that would consume between 100,000 and 200,000 tons of waste per year. This leverages the proven ITOS energy-from-waste technology and produces electricity or heat, and also leverages proven implemented carbon capture and storage technology, which in aggregate allows you to eliminate about 97% to 98% of the carbon contained within landfill waste. The, there have been a few attempts at building waste-to-energy facilities in Alberta before. Most of them have been with new novel technology. It's important to highlight that Green Transition Holdings owns patented technology called ITOS that has a specific advantage around its ability to take in wide variety of waste sources at different calorific values, and is inherently low emissions technology that significantly exceeds all of the European Union emissions regulations. I'll skip through this fairly quickly, but the Green Transition Holding team has got deep industry experience and knowledge, particularly strong on the capital and finance front, very keen to invest in the Canadian marketplace and bring their experience and networks of investors, both on the debt and equity side, into the Canadian marketplace. This slide is a bit of a representative project of what we would ideally hope to build in Innisfail. This is the Hams Hall project that GTH is building in the UK. This is a 150,000-ton project. It'll be about a $200 million build. All of the rights and options are secure on this with construction expected to commence in early 2023. It's about a two-year process. And this site is about a seven-acre site. And so, significant opportunity to replicate some of the existing engineering and design work done and try to build a representative project like that here. Overall, as a bit of background for us, so we have now structured and funded a Canadian subsidiary that will be headquartered in Edmonton. As Todd mentioned, we've recently adopted a trade name in Canada of Varma Energy. Varma is the Norwegian word for heat and warmth. So looking to build the business as a heat platform. We have two project negotiations underway in the Edmonton region. We've been shortlisted for $25 million subsidy through the Low Carbon Economy Challenge and begun building out partnerships associated with EPC manufacturing and OEM within the industry, as well as a number of signed letters of support from some of the carbon capture and storage operators within products. Getting into the Innisfail conversation, as Todd had mentioned, we're seeking a letter of intent to pursue the project, pursue a project in Innisfail. CEO Becker has a copy of the draft of a letter of intent, and the high-level terms associated with this involve signing the intent to have Innisfail be a site for a proposed facility for us to purchase or lease land within Innisfail, approximately a seven-to-10-acre parcel for Innisfail to make its municipal waste available to the project at a minimum of its current tipping fees to landfill, and then a joint commitment around advocacy of the project with regional partners, the provincial and federal government, and other stakeholders associated with the project. In terms of the perceived benefits to Innisfail, did a quick overview here. Significant local economic development opportunity, the size of facility median vision in Innisfail would be between 150 and $250 million in CapEx. You'd have about 20 to 30, depending on the facility size, you'd have between 20 and 30 full-time operator positions for the 25-year-plus life span of the facility, as well as a significant construction and commissioning labor force requirement. Also, a major opportunity to take a climate leadership position and achieve 100% landfill diversion for Innisfail's waste, as well as to provide a meaningful CO2 source for any, I know enhanced energy is, looking at building a CCS. This is a project that will come close to Innisfail. This could be a significant source of CO2 into one of those CCS projects. Additionally, opportunity to secure reliable long-term tax revenue for Innisfail and feel that this is a potential catalyst project that aligns well with the energy features that Burrow should come into the community. So that's the summary of the presentation. Made this available and would be happy to take any questions or chat at all.
Thank you very much, Sean. Does anyone have any questions? So, I have a question. I'm curious with the waste streams. Like, can you take anything? Because we never know quite what ends up sometimes in the bins.
Yeah. I'm hesitant to always say anything, but for all intents and purposes, any municipal solid waste going to landfill can be consumed within the facility. You do eddy curry and eddy current and magnet separation for any metals. But in general, this can take couches, it can take mattresses, it can take furniture. There's no real limitation on the waste. You generally wanna design to an expected calorific value, so you wanna do a bit of testing on just what generally is the energy content of your waste. So you can design the ovens, but there's a bit of the magic of the ITOS technology is it's built with adaptive cruise control, so you can speed and speed up and slow down the process based on the calorific value of the actual waste coming in that day.
Is there any potential, Sean, for hospital waste?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And from our perspective, typically, hospital waste is higher fee than municipal waste.
CEO Becker?
Hey, Sean, just to confirm, a letter of intent, that's what you're seeking today is on the agenda. So I'm assuming the next steps would be to more, go more deeper into feasibility?
Deeper into feasibility, and then primary, primary project development consideration is the access to the waste stream. And so, working with regional partners to generally trying to hit a target of a minimum of 100,000 tons in, per year, per project. And so, let's say, primary project development challenge is securing those long-term waste streams, ideally on five-to-10-year terms. And so have had some conversations with some of the regional mayors and counties, but that, that's the most pressing consideration.
Great, thank you.
Was your conversation quite favorable, Sean? With, like, are there barriers that we need to be aware of that we can maybe help with, or?
Yeah, I would say some of the potential barriers, there are no permitted waste-to-energy facilities in Alberta. It's an industry that's saturated in Europe and sort of virtually non-existent in Alberta. So, in spirit of sort of rentake reduction and economic traction, support in and promotion around helping secure the environmental permit would be a key area of collaboration. And then to go back on the ability to network with other towns, counties, and municipalities to secure waste streams.
Councillor Dunham?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Sean, thank you again. Good to see you again. Is there a range that would make it economically viable? Like, is Calgary, south to Lethbridge, is there a certain distance to collect the waste from that makes it more economic? I mean, obviously, the closer, more economically viable it is, but what is sort of the range, maximum range, that would make it effective for you?
Yeah. Bit of an interesting logistics question. I believe Innisfail's waste is currently going to Camrose. So you can see in the province, there's significant amounts of waste that's traveling 100 to 200-plus kilometers each way. And so, pretty wide operating range and where you can take your waste product from. Also, an ability to train it in. And I believe there's a rail spur that's come into the industrial sector. So, which then theoretically you take from almost anywhere in Canada. So, optionality on how you drive the waste. Realistically, ideally, you want for the maximum environmental impact to be sourcing from the region. So our vision for Innisfail is it's a nice hedge between Red Deer and Calgary. And Calgary currently has pretty high landfill fees. And so, ideally, trying to pull from Red Deer's south and Calgary north as the operating region for this facility.
Thank you. One more quick question. Obviously, there's still a byproduct left over even at the high temperature burning. What, what sort of weight per input is left behind that? I guess it all depends on what it's furniture, the heavier wood or whatever, but sort of what happens to that afterwards?
Yeah. So the, the, you produce fly ash and bottom ash out of the process. And so, generally, you articulated it depends a bit on what you're, what's going into the facility, but your ballpark, 14% to 16% of your total weight coming out as ash are in conversations with carbon upcycling technology about potentially having that ash be a feedstock into their carbon strength and concrete process, which would allow for full landfill diversion. If you don't have a use for that ash, then that is required to go to landfill.
Thank you.
Sorry, Councillor Highstead? Okay. Okay, Councillor Harrison?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Barkley, and thank you, Sean, for the presentation. I just have one question. What about odor?
Yeah, no major odor considerations associated with this. You, as your, your waste trucks are coming into the facility, they tip into a closed bunker, so you don't have exposed waste at any point in time. And then your combustion temperatures are north of 800 degrees Celsius. And so, there's no, there's no significant odors caused associated with the facilities. And there's not an open tip floor, which is what you would have odor considerations for some like Edmonton Waste Management, where you've got an open tip floor that all the waste comes onto before it gets processed. That doesn't exist for us in this facility.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Highstead?
Hi, Sean. Thanks for your time today. I guess it's, it's not a really a question, it's about how to educate our citizens where we're going. And I don't wanna jump the gun, but I think that projects or letter of intents like this are really important. But I think sometimes when I see big projects, you know, potential like this, is there an oper, do you think we would be jumping the gun to educate the public or our citizens on the importance of this as, you know, right off the gate, right out of the gate? Or, or how do you, how is that handled? Because I think that what happens is, and this is a public forum, we have, you know, reporters and stuff. I always believe that more information and good information to the citizens will help us with any project that's going on. So how, how do you see that shaping for us?
Yeah. Great point, and potentially something we could add in to this letter of intent around conducting a series of community sort of education sessions or information sessions. See that as being critical for success of a project like this long-term, to have community buy-in and to have this be seen as a welcome facility within the community. In terms of education, I think a lot of it is just sharing the existing experiences from some of the facilities and projects that GTH has been a part of and that sort of exists across Europe. There are, there are operating waste-to-energy facilities in, in US and Canada. And so I think just sharing of how these projects have been developed elsewhere and what the vision for this project is would be really helpful. So would be happy to either take that as a sidebar or include something like that in a letter of intent.
I appreciate that. I think we're, as a country and, and in being from North America, I think we're more alike with other parts of the world than we, you know, when we let on sometimes. So I think it's really important that everybody realizes that we're in this together. Thanks.
Yeah. We're all, we're all same species, part of Mother Earth Inc., so definitely agree.
Councillor Bates?
Yeah. Sean, I have one process question that kind of evolved from your discussion. So the 800-degree Celsius temperature, is that 100% ongoing generated from the feedstock as it's doing its own process? And do you need a, do you need an initial startup source when you first? And then, I can get, I have four questions. And then you anticipate that you wouldn't start it frequently? It would just, once it's going, it goes? Is that how?
So, correct across the board. You do require some startup energy for input to get your ovens up to temperature. Once they're at temperature, you maintain your process consistently. The facilities operating in Europe generally operate between 7,800 and 8,200 hours per year. Generally try to do two one-week shutdowns for maintenance, but you can do it on a line-by-line basis, so your facility never fully shuts down. But the vision is, once you've got it to temperature and running, there's, for very few reasons, would you ever wanna shut off?
So we, kinda supplemental, would you be able to coast through a normal power failure without any difficulties?
Yeah, we'd be, we'd be generating power ourselves, so shouldn't have any challenges with.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Sean, for joining us today. And we do have the letter of intent discussion a little bit later in the agenda. So I don't think there's anything further from this side, but I'm sure CEO Becker and his team will be in touch with you in the near future.
Sounds great. Really appreciate the time and good to see y'all.
Okay. Appreciate your time too. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so we will move on to 5.1. Innisfail RCMP Multi-Year Financial Plan. And Staff Sergeant Chris Matichuk is with us today. So, welcome.
Good afternoon. Yes, I have the, our financial plan, a five-year, multi-year financial plan. This year, we didn't project any increases to resources. Currently, we have 10 regular members, including one sergeant, one corporal, eight constables, and three admit support staff. And we feel that we're being very adequately supported by the town of Innisfail, and we see no need for additional resources within the next upcoming five years, given the path we're on. And there are a few increases or additions in the five-year plan. Just to highlight a couple of them. We're going through like evergreening and maintaining on our building. A few of the projects that are in the works is a painting and flooring for our office. Upgrade to our GIS, a General Investigation Section Room and a briefing room. And the weeping tile, the weeping tile's been long collapsed in our building, causing water problems. So we hopeful next month, within the next few weeks, that project's gonna start to rectify our, our water problems. And in addition, there is a list of equipment upgrades as we move forward. And some of these upgrades, like the body worn cameras are gonna be costed out by the federal government, but then after they roll out, they will cascade down to the municipalities. To mention, some of them noted in the plan are pistol modernization. Our current pistol is, hasn't been made for quite a while, so it's getting to the point it's really outdated, so it's scheduled to be replaced. Ongoing replacement with our tasers, our CWs, portable ballistic shields, breaching equipment, extended impact range weapons, and hard body armor modification or renewal or some of the stuff that's protected within the next three to five years. Like to mention too as well, the plan is in principle only if the agreement is supported, and it's produced or forward to the council as per the municipal policing agreement. So again, in principle, agreement is sought only. There's no absolute conditions at this time for the costs coming up. And one other thing out of our control is the ongoing wage increases and that. That's all negotiated through the church board and our unions as well. And that continues to maintain. The cost of that will be at 70% for the town of Innisfail. That's all I have. Open any questions in the plan?
Okay, well, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Councillor Bates?
Well, yeah, I tried to read through the whole thing, and I guess I'm trying to get a feel for the total cost other than, than what we pay. What is that anticipated increase? Cause you said the first year it wouldn't be significant. And then, but then as I look at some of the individual categories, like the operation equipment is a huge jump into next year, and then it seems to kinda stay at that level. And I see big jumps in both technology and somewhat in vehicle. So what is the net? When we, when we, and I realize we have to embrace some of these changes, but trying to get a feeling for how much that net back to the town increases next year and beyond, because it looks significant, like million plus or more.
Yeah. Some of the increases are like, we haven't got a timeline when they're gonna roll out. Like, the projected costs coming up in that table there, and they're only projected costs given to me at an estimated level. And like, the, all the costs are calculated at the salary cost is 70%, and then our building is shared with provincial resources as well. So the costs are estimated at the level of number of employees the municipality has within our office. We still have provincial positions, and we have eight provincial positions, plus we have a traffic unit that do share the costs. So the costs of the buildings are projected out there. And those costs listed there, like the fit-up costs, contingency costs are the actual increases. And I can't comment any further on it, because I don't know what the future brings and how soon these will roll out.
And I'm not questioning the details of what. I'm just trying to figure out how prepared our town is for, for the, for the overall conglomerate. It looks to me like it, it's hard to, like, I would hope that we would get that from administration. What is, what's the last five years looked like compared to the next five years? Cause it looks to me like, like there's a big jump in '23, '24, and then it settles down a little bit. But when I try to kinda just eyeball '24 through '27, adding several categories, it looks like a couple million dollars extra. And that's huge. So I'm just trying to get a, you know, we're kinda sort of expected to approve this going forward, but prove and authorize to sign off on it. I'd like to know kinda what, what, what that conglomerate is, and then we're gonna have to have some serious discussion of how we, how we pay for it.
I believe those, those total costs up there, the fit-ups and that, that's for all the municipal departments within the province. And like the 1.62 million for vehicles, a fit-up costs. It's under my belief that it's for, for all municipalities across the province. And we don't have that many vehicles. We have a total of, I believe, between a provincial and municipal, we have seven to nine vehicles in total. So the costs are, are cascaded, a percentage of what the actual costs that are listed on this plan.
So to that extent, I guess I'd be looking for what Innisfail, what, what is Innisfail looking at? Thank you.
I'm a Mayor Barkley. As Chris is talking about and what the report reflects, it's a pool. So vehicles and equipment, it's purchased, procured through a larger pool. We can do our, you know, this provides us some detail on forecasting and to better understand where we may go, but it's still forecast. We'll get the finer detail from, from, I think it's Winnipeg, I think. I can't remember where all the financial stuff comes from. But yeah, it's, we could just take this and kind of understand what's coming. But we don't have the fine detail, town of Innisfail will be charged with this because it comes in a pool purchasing piece. So to say we're going to get, it's going to go up 2%, 3%, it's, it's often challenged. We just know, looking at this, that we can anticipate there's going to be increases to, we know the salary piece more than anything. But the equipment and so forth, we can anticipate there'll be additional charge to us. So it's a best guess at this moment.
Yeah, and even the salary piece is up in the air, like we, we don't know yet where that's headed. I was on a meeting, I don't know when it was, maybe a month ago, three weeks ago, with Public Safety Canada. And there's still a lot of discussion going on about who's going to pay for that, is going to be split? Is the federal government going to bore that cost? So I don't know if we're going to see any resolution to that in the, any time soon for that matter. So there's a lot of things up in the air right now. Counselor Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor Barclay. Can I assume then that if we approve this multi-year financial plan, that we're giving support to the provincial plan?
Um, Mayor Barclay, to Counselor Harrison, no, this, you see this every year. You've signed off, off, on it every year. Even if it said Chris needs one more member, that doesn't mean we're going to get a member. We have to then put it in budgets. So we don't have a lot of muscle arm to, to, to lobby against the equipment and pistols and so forth. Where counsel can play in is on if Chris saying we need another member, you have a right to say yes, no, and that, that affects us directly. But what Chris has done over, now several years anyway, is come in with this forecast. Here's where we think this is going to go, but nothing is being pulled from our budget. We just, he's just kind of given us a picture that you can anticipate there's going to be increased costs to our CMP services. Just, sorry if I took your.
No, you explained it much better than I did. Like you say, it's a principle only, it's not a commitment. And then these are the total costs throughout the province. So the Innisfail only builds for, when it fit up for vehicles, for the number of vehicles that allocate to the town. We have a total of vehicles, we have seven, and roughly like four of them are town vehicles. So the, these are the projected costs for all the municipalities across the province. So it's not what's Innisfail's getting billed. And, and it's, and in this plan, it's just projections. As the, the costs roll out, more information will follow. And again, we're not projecting any increase to, stuff in our control definitely is, resources is a big thing. And we feel we're very adequately supported by the municipality. So we haven't requested any additional resources toward attachment.
Counselor Wing?
Um, thank you, Mayor Barclay. Then just to clarify, are these projections then based all on 2022 numbers? Or has inflation been built into any of this? Is this like from a forecasting perspective? Is it accurate from that perspective?
Well, the forecasting is done with projected inflation. But as we seen this last year, inflation's quite a bit higher than, than it has been for several years. So again, they're the best guess projections, they're not hard fast.
Okay, any further questions? If not, could I please have someone make the recommended motion?
I'll move the recommended motion, Mayor Bark, Mayor Barclay. Oh, I'll read that for you. The council approves and authorized the chief elected official to sign off on the Innisfail Municipal Detachment Multi-Year Financial Plan.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
I have one, further one. So as we look at that, it does look like the biggest change is going to be next year because of all the different equipment upgrades and that sort of thing. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, Counselor, it is. Some of the projects have been ongoing for several years, like the body worn cameras and the pistol modernization. And that's coming probably within the next year.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. All in favor? Perfect. And Staff Sergeant Matichuk, this is likely your last meeting with us. So on behalf of council and administration, we wish you the very best and your next career. And you've done a fantastic job here in the community. I know everyone's going to miss you very much. And we do have something for you, we just don't have it today. But we will get it to you for sure before you leave us. So thanks again for all the work you've done in our community and for being such a great partner with the town of Innisfail.
Thank you, Mayor. And I did say a couple, a few words, it's really tough leaving. Every four and a half years, I've always moved on, but I've stayed here for 10. And I kind of put down roots here, and it, it really feels like home. And the support I got from the town and the council over the years has been really immense. And it was a really tough decision, but I think it was time to, to move on and hopefully try something different. But it is tough leaving, and thanks again.
No, we wish you and your family the very best, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to 5.2, the Chief Administrative Officer's Report with CEO Becker.
Didn't you, Mayor Barclay, didn't you call me something earlier before the CEO?
Fabulous CEO.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, Mayor Barclay. Just a few items leading into the meat of the report. Looking at some council direction just regarding the Transition Accelerator Training Program. As you can see, that in recommended motion. Just a for, a couple formalities based on the AMP meeting. That is to send the notice, the Alberta Commission regarding the electrical, or electrical, election boundary changes. And just get on the books, the Chamber of Commerce market, just a quick motion there. And then, of course, receive the report as information presented. So the report is there, but a little more information regarding that Transition Accelerator. As you can see, the administration did follow up with the accelerator. And they did state if council could respond fairly quickly on, on dates that best reflects council's calendar. As the report indicates, looking at around that mid-August, 18th and 19th, or the following few days, 22nd, 23rd of August, or the first part of September, September 1st and 2nd. So I'd like to have council maybe give some direction there, what best works for you. And then, as the report states too, and administration further research on the proposed electoral boundaries. There's a little bit more information there for you, likely I'll work with the mayor. Just getting that, the notice of representation submitted by the August 15th deadline, with that in-person hearing being held September 21st in Olds or in Redder. And then the virtual hearings slated mid, mid-October. And just to let you know that the market on main table, council table has been booked. Yeah, and we'll see if we can help you out on, you know, tents. We know it can be pretty toasty there during that length of time. So we'll certainly do some research to see if we can help you out for your comfort, as well as your engagements. Yeah, and that's really the report, Mayor Barclay.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, with respect to the tents, make sure somebody's there when it comes time to take it down. It's been a challenge in the past. So we'll have someone make the, do you want us to discuss dates, CEO Becker, on for the Transition Accelerator? So maybe we can just find out from everybody what suits? Anybody away August 18th, 19th?
Mayor Barclay, I'll likely be away for all those dates.
September 1st, September 2nd works best for me, so.
Seeing as I couldn't do any, couldn't do it in June, I can do any of these.
Good. Everybody's okay, other than Counselor Masara? So do we want to hold off Counselor Masara until we're available, or?
I, I would like to be part of it, but I also don't want to hold you back. I know this is the second time you've looked at it. And I don't know, maybe there's another time that I can join after. So I wouldn't want to hold you, hold you back.
When would you be available? Do you know? October or?
Yeah.
So do we want to hold back to October? Do, or do we need to get going on this?
Um, Mayor Barclay, we only looked at the immediate future, we didn't look beyond. We could certainly go back and see if what other dates are available, if that's what council wishes.
Yeah, because I think this is going to be somewhat customized for this council. So I'm not sure that, you know, they do have courses, but they're, they wouldn't necessarily be the same as what we're getting. So we can hold off, I guess, until October? Okay? Okay?
Okay, we'll come back with some, with some additional dates and see what.
Do you still want to go ahead with recommended motion, though, that, or do you want to wait till we have new dates?
I think I'll come back with new dates, Mayor Barclay, if that's works for council.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, thank you. So we'll move on then to the second motion, if somebody could please make that.
I'll make that motion, Mayor Barclay, that council directs administration to send a notice of representation to the Alberta Commission regarding the proposed federal election boundary changes.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any comments, questions about that? Okay, all in favor? And then the next motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor Barclay, that council participates and books a table at the Chamber of Commerce market on main event.
Okay, perfect. And that's starting not this week, but the week after. No.
So last week was the very first week, but tomorrow is actually the big grand event, and they have entertainment.
But council participation is the week after, correct?
Yes, I apologize.
The first week of July.
Wanted to get my dig in, to ask everyone to come tomorrow too, though.
So Mayor Barclay, it doesn't say it in this motion, but the understanding I had was once per month?
Yes.
Thank you.
So all in favor? Okay, and then the next motion, please? Someone approves the CEO report?
I assume move that council approves the Chief Administrative Officer report dated June 27th, 2022 as information.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Perfect, thank you. And we will move on to 5.3, the Request for Decision on the Waste to Energy Letter of Intent. CEO Becker?
Sure, thanks, Mayor Barclay. As per the delegation's request, Sean Collins, Varma Energy is looking for a letter of intent. So there's a draft attached for council consideration. So we had really the background, you heard it through Mr. Collins. And we did have some previous conversations outside the realm of, of council. But pulled the information back in to you to have some preliminary understanding of what is possible, I guess, or has potential regarding Innisfail being a location for a waste-to-energy facility development. The letter of intent, as I read it, Mayor and Council, it's not committing, it's not contractual. So it, there's really no liability at this point. It, it does line up nicely with your, your draft strategic plan, which is further on your, your agenda. And the financial piece would be really tied into your time likely at some point, but also administration's time to, to really explore, I guess, support of the letter of intent and further exploring the possibility of what this could be.
Yeah, I also think the letter of intent kind of puts Innisfail in a position that we want to be the whole site for this, if possible, for the region. And, you know, that's now formalized.
If I may, Mayor Barclay, and I think Counselor Heisei had said it quite well, maybe the letter of intent, if you get to approve this letter of intent, maybe add some component of Varma working with the community to, to provide knowledge and engage with what, what this could be for the town of Innisfail.
Yeah, definitely, because I, I think, you know, a lot of people think of the Plasco situation. And, you know, it may look negatively on this, where, where, whatever, we are 15 years away from that. And so technology has changed. And so could somebody please make that motion?
Mayor Barclay, I would like to move that council provide a letter of intent to Varma Energy demonstrating the town's support in further exploring the potential of developing a waste-to-energy facility within the town.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, discussion? All in favor? Thank you. We'll move on to 5.4, Strategic Plan Update with CEO Becker.
Thanks, Mayor Barclay. It's, I know finally we have something to present to you. Really, it's on my lap. I just want to commend Communications Team for putting together a public document for us. I must state, however, the, the community has not seen a, the physical copy of this. We have worked hard administratively to, to work within what we heard from you during the budget process, leading into a more coordinated facilitation back in February 2022. And so this is a fluid document, so council, just look in. You know, it does change based on your, on your direction. And I do recommend you do spend some time, at least once a year, but if not more often, to really take a look at it and making sure we understand what the current priorities are. For example, if the waste-to-energy conversation we just had, that would be a new action item. So it's, you know, it's not totally in-depth that we're spending dollars towards that. But if we move into more of a feasibility, you know, that does do a shift in your strategic focus, meaning that administration's time would be more geared and allocated toward this new initiative. It's, it's really to do a, it's hard to do an add-on to the current workload and strategy of something of magnitude of, of that example. So yeah, it is fluid. And besides the strap plan and the capital plan and operational budgets, there, it's not really reflective of the day-to-day work that is supporting the services of the town of Innisfail. So what administration is recommending is to go through the document, that, you know, making sure it fits you ultimately. Providing feedback, direction associated with that. And once you're comfortable with that, we can do a deeper dive on some of the actions associated with right now and what's being worked on and what's, what's really coming next. We did an all-in, we've also attached some of the measurables on, on the action control, and some of the directives you've provided outside of, of budget. So, and lastly, the SLT is ready to provide you just kind of a snapshot of what they're working on, even outside of the strap plan. So it's a, we're just hoping that you can spend a little bit of time to kind of look at this and allow administration to really kind of acknowledge where they're at with projects and some of the work that they're doing.
So question, CEO Becker, would we like to maybe table this motion to a future meeting? And maybe at the next AMP, we can maybe go through this a little bit more in-depth. And I think everybody, this agenda came out Friday, I believe. And it's been a bit of a busy weekend for many people and.
Sure, whatever council wishes to do.
I don't know how everybody feels about that, but. What's that?
I would support that.
I'll make a motion to table.
To the next?
To the next AMP.
Well, yeah.
If that works for administration and council?
Yeah. Anybody else want to add anything, or? All in favor? Okay. Yeah, so maybe next AMP, we'll do a little deeper dive through it and people can have a opportunity to really dig into it over the next week or so. And holidays are coming, right, long weekends, so we'll have time then. Right, team? Okay, we'll move on to 5.5, and the 100 radon test kit challenge with CEO Becker.
So speaking, maybe Counselor Harrison can add into this topic. I just want to commend Cara for pulling all this information together in her research and producing this RFG for me to speak to. So really, it's more detail, looking for more formal direction to proceed, submitting the application to take action on radon for participation in this 100 radon test kit challenge based on council's interest to do so. So this report is supportive, but a little bit more detail with, with Cara engaging with the association responsible for this project. with the association responsible for this project at this given time. So this was inceptioned in first campaign in 2018, 2019. Since then, only three Alberta communities have participated in the challenge. Innisville would be the only one participating in 2022. And we, although there was a date kickoff, June 22, we're still within the realm to apply based on the research that we conducted. So just really looking to see, do I do it? Looking probably likely the front office would be the liaison in, you know, getting the right information and the kits. Obviously, communications, marketing, this opportunity. And then, of course, bringing everything back in and submitting back to the, to that association. So again, if there's any questions to it, and if not, looking for formal direction.
Thank you. Can I please have someone make the recommended motion?
I'd so move that we direct administration to submit an application to take action on radon for participation in the 2022-23 100 radon test kit challenge.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Heistad?
Yeah, no, I just want to recognize Don putting this forward. He noticed this when we were going around the FCM tables and the trade show. So there's a lot of good stuff at FCM. So I just want to commend our colleague for bringing this forward. And, you know, I think that's the unfortunate thing is at these events, there's a lot of good things that we can, you know, try to implement in our own community. So good on you, Don. Thanks.
Counselor Bates.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I certainly, this is one of those things I just see no reason not to because it's being offered to us. And just a little bit more information. I did cross paths with my son this weekend, who actually tested his own home. He, this was in Cochrane. He purchased an electronic device to test it, found it was, actually had heard neighbors that were fairly high, found his was borderline. And it did cost him somewhere in that estimated $2,700 to $3,000 to correct the situation. And he's tested a lot since and he's comfortable now that his is very good. But anybody that does this can probably find that they need to do things. And, yeah, there's no reason not to do it, for sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? No, all in favor? Pass, thank you. And we will move on to 5.6, the council action control. If there's no questions, I'll have someone please make a motion. We accept this as information.
Mayor Berkeley, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor? Perfect. And we will move on to 6.1 with Director Vickers on the first quarter financials.
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley. So each year, administration presents quarterly financials for council to review and approve. The financials currently presented are for the first quarter of 2022, which is January, should say January 1st, sorry, to March 31st. So administration has reviewed the financial information being presented, and the actual figures have been compared to the 2022 final budget for the year, which was approved on December 13 in 2021. And administration believes this to be a true representation of the state of the financials as of March 31st. So the financials show an overall revenue of 12% budget compared to a 25% measurable for the first quarter. Upon reviewing the first quarter for 2021, it was the same percentage as last year. And some reasons that we're not sitting at that 25% yet is basically is our tax revenue. We don't recognize that revenue until the second quarter. So that is primarily why we're a bit low. And some other revenues to note, we're business licenses, they're at 94%. We do primarily collect all of that at the beginning of the year. Animal licenses is a bit lower at 68%, but again, we collect most of that at the beginning of the year as well. So the financials show an overall expense of 19% of budget compared to 25% measurable. And again, when we reviewed the 2021 first quarter, this was, again, the same percentage. Some to note, our salaries is at 19%. This is a really good benchmark, considering we're under that 25% mark. Membership fees are at 50%. Most of those are primarily paid at the beginning of the year, which is why it's a bit higher. Insurance is at 105%. We do have to pay that in January every year. Gas utilities is at 49%, which is a bit high, but the winter months are primarily much more expensive than the summer months for us. And grants to others is at 52%, and that counts for the library requisition. And a portion of the FCSS requisitions have been expended out at that point. So all revenues and expenses are within budget approvals for the quarter. Pandemic expenses, we are still tracking that. It's been quite low for the first quarter, so just over $1,000. We will continue to track and allocate any, any time and expenses if needed, but that will slowly go away. So if anyone has any questions, I'll take that, other than that.
All right. Thank you. I'll have somebody make the motion, then we can have some questions, if there are any.
Thanks, Mayor Berkeley. All will move that council approves the first quarter financials as presented.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Counselor Bates.
I have one. You mentioned the gas utilities being high and reflected on the winter months. I look at my own and it don't seem to have dropped down as much as they have in previous years. And I'm, and I've locked in. So I'm wondering, are you seeing the town's ones? Are the, are there all those other associated costs going up? Like the transmission and all the other things that come on your utility bill?
Mayor Berkeley, through to Counselor Bates. So I haven't done a full in-depth review. Likely that will happen once, maybe in the second or third quarter, to see where the trend is, but.
Okay, no, just curious, thank you.
Counselor Dunham.
Mayor Berkeley, thank you. Through to Director Vickers. So comparative to last year, you said we're aligned. And coming out of, you know, two-year pandemic, I'm sure that those figures are fairly similar. I mean, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but going back further than that, are we still pretty aligned with what, where things have been over the last, like, say, four or five years? Is this pretty much status quo for this, the first quarter?
Absolutely. So Mayor Berkeley, through to Counselor Dunham. I did actually look at 2020s as well. So we are, for the revenue, we were up 1%. And for the expense, we were down 1%. So we are still in that same kind of ballpark, yeah.
Counselor Maseros.
Thank you. Mayor Berkeley, through to Director Vickers. Just a little question about the COVID expenses. What did, what does that get spent on?
Sure, Mayor Berkeley, through to Counselor Masero. So that primarily is extra cleaning supplies. If we have to buy gloves or masks or hand sanitizer, things like that.
Okay, nothing further. We have a motion, all in favor? Great, Carrie, thank you. And we will move on to 6.2, the borrowing bylaw, request for decision with Director Vickers.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Berkeley. So 1685-2022, the Southwest Industrial Park Borrowing Bylaw is before council for consideration of second and third reading. At the May 24 regular council meeting, this borrowing bylaw came before council and was given first reading. I did attach the original report, just in case someone wanted that reference. After the first reading was passed, we advertised in the El Burton on May 31 and June 7. And then, as the MGA required, requirement stipulate, we did have to wait for the 15-day petition period, which has now ended. And we had not received a petition or even a simple inquiry regarding this bylaw. So because we haven't, we are here today for this second and third reading, at which point the bylaw will become valid 30 days from now, on July 27. And then we can go ahead and submit our loan application after that. So I did just do an update of the interest rates, because they are ever-changing. So now it does appear that the 10-year interest rate, which is likely what we'd be looking at, is up to 4.69%. However, the only good note is, is that because it's due on the 27th, that's when we can submit our loan, we'll actually be able to get in the September 15 loan issuance date, because the application deadline is July 29. So, yeah. So if there are any questions? If not, I would like second and third reading for the 1685-2022 Southwest Industrial Park Borrowing Bylaw.
Okay, thank you. So could I please ask someone to give second reading?
I move that council accept and give 1685-2022 Southwest Industrial Park Borrowing Bylaw second reading.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Bates.
So I have one regarding the procedure, assuming that we go through and finish even third reading. So at what point do we actually decide the details of what we're authorizing to borrow? And what the, because when we did first reading, we looked at there were options to pay interest only and all kinds of different things. So at what point do we define the actual loan, I guess it is?
Mayor Berkeley, through to Counselor Bates. So originally, maybe I misunderstood. I thought that it was going to be an interest-only payment, and we were going to pay the brunt of the loan off at the end of the term. That was going to be how we made that application. But if not, I will take any direction from council.
Maybe I couldn't catch it, but I personally mean, I'm not for, for only paying back interest. Otherwise, we're just passing on a huge potential problem. I would like to see some model where we're paying some principal. I would, yeah, that's just me. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Heistad?
So you're saying to have the option to pay it off, right? Like to pay down that principal? Like, are we, we got 12 million bucks in the bank right now. Are you, like, what are you seeing us doing? Instead of just paying off the loan on the interest side?
If we're defining the actual loan as only paying interest off for 10 years, that doesn't make me comfortable. I want to see some of the principal paid off. That's just, it's a personal, I would never take out a loan in my personal life that I wasn't paying principal off. That's, that's just my feeling.
Counselor Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley. Can we have a look at the first reading, how that was, how that was structured? Does it say the options in the first reading? I don't believe it did, but I know we had a discussion, Counselor Bates, but what we're voting on today is borrowing $5.5 million, not how we pay it back. Am I, am I misinterpreting something?
That was my original question. When are we defining the loan? And I think I'm hearing we've, we've got the loan defined as interest only. And so I didn't connect to that the first time.
Do we have that? Are we connected to interest only?
Mayor Berkeley, through to Counsel Harrison. Absolutely not. It just did say that it would be of interest-only semi-annual payments, starting in December. So that was the intent in the first report, that it would be interest-only. But we can make that change if you'd like. Just note, any change we do have will likely have a tax increase implication as well, which is why we chose to go, or we suggested to go this way instead.
And I believe it's to actually collect revenue on the land sales to put back to that principal was kind of the logic as well.
Well, and it also, you know, when, you know, doing interest-only as a municipality is much different than doing it as, on a personal basis. We have fairly consistent revenue streams and the return on investment, which will be much different by paying interest only as pulling capital out of whether our reserves or wherever it is to pay back a loan. And, I mean, if we're confident that we're going to make sales on this land, you know, I personally quite confident that hopefully we will sell the land out long before 10 years is up and that that land would be paid off. But, yeah, I'm definitely an interest-only person. Just my opinion on, on how we structure this.
Yeah, I understood that it was, it was due to the sale and keeping it this structure as is. But we're all here to speak on it. And that's how I, that's how I interpreted the, the ask, or not the ask, but the, the original motion. So that's it.
Mayor Berkeley, thank you. I'm agreeing with the interest only. I mean, as was discussed, there is no penalty in that situation and allows us to, if it takes us two, three years to sell the land, that we, and have that amount of time. And I also think that we all know that the interest that has been expressed in it, and I don't imagine it's going to take that long. And we do have, you know, currently substantial amount of money in the bank for considering our position. So I'm very comfortable with it.
CEO Becker.
Yeah, just to point to the supporting reports. Carrie, if you wouldn't mind going to page three of the supplemental reports. Just. So, yeah, the current 10-year interest rate offered by the government states the rates, rates are fixed and guaranteed. Loan type will be payment of interest only semi-annually commencing December 15, 2022. Last payment consists of the entire principal and last interest payment, which will take place in 2032. So information's there for, for your review. And so I want to interject in your deliberation. But it's certainly clear of what the, what the advice is of your administration.
Counselor Bates.
Yeah, so I just wanted to reiterate that as I looked at this, and I guess I misinterpreted, my understanding was this would be the maximum exposure as we authorized proceeding with a borrowing bylaw. But I did not, I did not personally understand that we had, we're locking, that's a bad term for this, that we were picking the interest-only option as being the way that this borrowing bylaw would be paid back. And I would, I would still like to see some array. And I realize now we're into a time-sensitive thing. And I don't know, when do we have to actually pass second and third reading to catch that September? I would like to see it. So we have a view of, and I don't, like, we should be able to go to a financial institution and say, what's your best estimate, too, about what the interest is likely to be, to become? Because this is one month and it's gone up 0.4. And I could see down the road, like, at some point, we have to actually, we commit to that borrowing of the 5.5 mil. If enough things change, then would we even consider? I realize we're committed to the underground deep services. Would we consider some of the other stuff being phased? Or if this got to be really not what we are expecting?
Mayor Berkeley, Counselor Bates, I think, you know, we're in the past, past that hour. We're already executing contracts. You know, I'd certainly, if you want to talk about principal and interest, I'd say my advice would be to remain as what's been communicated to you. Look at your, you know, your budgetary process and what's coming at you. Because if you want to, as the director indicated, that you'll likely have a tax complication with this. And right now, we're likely anticipating, you know, some, some stress on resources going into 2023. Until you see that full picture, I'd hate to say move into just, you know, doing the principal and interest without seeing that full picture. Right now, I totally respect what you're saying, but until you have that full picture of what else is coming for you on tax demand, this would be the, the best administrative advice, I think, for your consideration. Because, again, taxes would be required to, to enhance payment on this, on this loan, if you want to pay the principal.
Director Vickers, did you say this 10-year rate is, if we move on this, we will get this 10-year rate?
No, Mayor Berkeley.
Okay, sorry.
The rate changes every couple of weeks. This was just where we're sitting at now, just to give you guys an idea of what we're sitting at, so.
Yep. Counselor Heistad?
Yeah, I see moving on it now makes sense. You know, we've had some deliberations. You know, we've had some deliberation before on it, and, you know, I I think the big thing is is we're trying to manage as well as we can the next few years and making sure that we're prudent with, you know, all our our tax, you know, dollars coming in. I I see this, at the end of the day, it's it's a commitment to the future, and that's how I'm looking at it. So I, and I can understand, you know, why Counselor Bates brings up the question for sure. But when when I look at long-term planning in in anything that you do, I look at, you know, what's going to be best, what's going to be the most suitable for a municipality to get through the tough times. And I think that what we have here before us is a is a commitment to the future, and that's that's how I'm looking at it. Thanks.
Well, if we don't invest in infrastructure, then we don't grow. So I think we've had a lot of that discussion around this park, and that's why we decided to move forward with it, so. Counselor Wing?
I just have two questions. Mayor Barkley, through to Director Vickers. And I I apologize, these might be very, very basic questions. But so we do, are we not able to make payments on principal without a penalty? Is that the problem? As we sell land, we can't present, we we'd be penalized or the the mortgage? That's one question, if we would be penalized. And number two, if we hang on to the debt for ten years, how does that impact us at that strategic level relative to further debt financing for other projects?
So Mayor Barkley through to Counselor Wing. So there's a slight penalty. I think it's like a two- or three-month interest penalty in order to make early payments, which is quite minimal. It might be, you know, a few thousand dollars, but if we were looking to pay it off early, it would be well worth it. And it will affect any future planning you have if you have this debt, just because now you don't have that debt limit to pull from, right? It will be sitting on our financial statements that we do have this debt, and until we pay it off, it won't be open up again, right? So it could impact future planning, right?
So so then, just one last question then. So if we're not, as we sell that land, if we're going to hold that money in our reserves, are we putting them as restricted reserves to say this money can't be touched until ten years from now when we make a loan payment? Or are we putting it in reserves to say we'll use it as we wish?
Likely, the recommendation would be that it would go into a restricted reserve that can only be used to either fund the annual payments to pay the interest or to go towards paying the lump sum, whenever that may be.
And that current reserve, Director Vickers, is about two point three?
Likely, we would actually, I would recommend we create a whole new reserve just for this specific project.
Okay.
And as money comes in, it will go into that reserve, and it's all on its own.
Okay.
Right? So it doesn't get mixed up between other funds.
That makes sense. Anything else? So we have a second motion on the table for second reading, I should say. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. And that's carried, and then we will have somebody make a motion for third and final reading. Counselor Heistad?
Yeah, I'll I'll move that council accepts and gives number one six eight five dash two zero two-two Southwest Industrial Park Borrowing Bylaw, third and final reading.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Counselor Bates?
Yes, I just wanted to comment that I'm certainly not against any of the things that council has spoke towards that we need to, you know, develop this land and and move forward and all that. I just don't believe it was clearly spelled out that we were heading in a direction to not pay off any principal for ten years. And that's what my objection is. Thank you.
Okay, so I just want to clarify. So we're not necessarily saying that, correct? But we we get a loan, we're going to pay likely interest only, but as land sales come in, we will then likely pay down principal as land sales come in?
We could do it either way, right? We could wait until we have enough to pay off the full balance.
Yep.
In in both scenarios, hopefully, it will be more than the ten years, right? It will be much earlier. Hopefully, two, three years, and we'll have enough to pay it off.
Okay, so how will that decision be made? Will that be, decision be made internally with, or will you have to come back to council all the time and say?
Yeah, maybe, because it's a restricted reserve, we would need a council motion to pull money out of that reserve, right?
Okay, fair enough. Okay, so we have the third and final reading on the table. All in favor? And opposed? Okay, Carrie, thank you. And we will move to seven point one, request for decision on a designated community status with Manager Shaw. Welcome.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Today I want to talk about human infrastructure or human capital from the standpoint of being able to attract people to our community, from the standpoint of growing our community and talking about the future of our community. So Alberta has a program called the Rural Renewal Stream. Over the last month or so, administration has been working to put together the pieces of making an application to this particular program. It's a a program that offers opportunities for immigrants to settle within a a community. It's a partnership between the town, businesses, and another organization, a settlement organization to assist in settling immigrants into the community. So as I said, we've been working on this for the last month or so. We come to to you today to be able to get an endorsement of a letter that will support our application to the program that would be under the signature of the the mayor. So there are already a few communities within Alberta that have been designated as such. But we believe that this will be a a good opportunity for us to have the same designation and then to be able to reach out to immigrants who may be interested in settling in a smaller community versus a Calgary or Edmonton. So that's why we are before you today with two recommended motions for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Manager Shaw. Could I please have someone make the first recommended motion? Counselor Maseros?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. I'd like to move that council approves an application to the province under the Rural Renewal Stream for Inisvile to become a designated community.
Okay, thank you. Discussion? Questions? Counselor Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley, through to Manager Shaw. I think it's a great program, and I I support it, but I see one challenge, and it's called housing. And I know we're working on that. Is there any ideas or, because once we become designated, you know, with what's happening worldwide, we could have quite an influx of of immigrants. And if we don't have any place to house them, what, where does that leave us? So maybe just, could you comment on that?
Yes, through the mayor to Counselor Harrison. This is really a long-term type of program. Just because we become designated doesn't mean that all of a sudden we're going to have a rush of immigrants coming to the community. So this is basically a a building block towards being able to attract more people, a diverse type of population into the community itself. So yes, housing is definitely a an issue for the community. But first of all, we need to be able to see, can we or will we be able to attract people to it? So let's begin with just getting the the building blocks together, and then we can start working on the other elements of building a sustainable community.
Thank you. Just one additional. Thank you, Mayor Barkley. What are some of the criteria to become a designated community?
So for example, one, town council has to approve the fact that they wish to, the community to become a designated community. Two, we need to have to have the support of an organization, a settlement organization that will help us in terms of being able to find means to be able to settle new immigrants into the community, whether that be housing, education, language, health, culture, those kinds of of ideas. So and then, three, we have to be designated by the province to be able to actually be call calling ourselves a designated community.
Counselor Maseros?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley, through to Manager Shaw. So once we've got the letter and we've got support of council, is it at that point that you begin communicating with employers and settlement agencies? Or how, when does that journey start?
So through the mayor to Counselor Maseros. Once we have the the letter from the mayor, then that will go to support our application to the Alberta government. And then the Alberta government will decide whether or not we are suitable to be designated a community. So there's a couple more steps to go. This is one, certainly a very important step. But at the same time, we need to have the approval of the province for us to call ourselves a designated community. So we kind of completed a a couple of steps. Once we have become designated, then we could start to work with employers who are interested in in bringing in others into the community. A lot of it has to do with the the actual individuals or families who are applying under this particular program. So there's a lot of steps involved, and this is basically just the first step. Kind of as I alluded to before, the building block to building a a better community.
Just one comment. This is my area of expertise. If there's anything I can do to help, if I can get you set up with any settlement agencies here or in Calgary, or, you know, give it, provide any advice along the way, please let me know.
Mayor and council administration will be leaning very heavily on your expertise in terms of being able to make sure that this program is a success.
Counselor Dunham?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley, through to Manager Shaw. I, several meetings we've attended lately, all we hear is about is a labor shortage. And one of the other things we've heard frequently is about welcoming inclusive communities. And as a community that has that body, to me, this just, this makes sense. And as far as attracting those people to have that, to have the sort of community that we have, I think, makes us a strong attractor. And I just, I commend you, and I think this is a wonderful program. Fully support.
Manager Shaw, I I did listen to a webinar, was that two weeks ago? I think Counselor Maseros was not able to, so I I listened to a little bit. I didn't get to catch the whole thing. So there was two streams that seemed, one for new Canadians coming as employers and another investment stream, correct? I don't know.
That is correct, yeah.
So would that be something that we're looking at as well, or is that something completely different?
That would be completely different from this particular element that we're talking about.
Okay, and the one thing that stood out for me and the part I did listen to was just what we've heard around this table is have to make sure we have a place to house people, and we have to make sure that we are a welcoming and inclusive community and and make sure people belong here when when they come. But so, yes, we do have labor shortages, but we want people to come here and stay here, right?
Yes, mayor and council, for sure. And that's, this is the first step to being able to create a, an environment in which we can attract people, immigrants into our community. Was just reading a paper about population in Alberta and the fact that there may be now be more of an interest of people moving into smaller centers, simply because of the the cost of living and because of the fact that COVID nineteen, for all of its issues, also showed that we can work remotely and commute a couple of times a week into a larger center. So we don't necessarily have to be at our desks five days a a week kind of thing. So new paradigms are opening with respect to how employment centers can be organized in provinces.
So from application being submitted to becoming designated timeline?
Probably be about a couple of months or so.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Okay, so we have a, we have a motion on the table. All in favor? Okay, and then we have a second motion. If somebody could please make that.
Mayor Barkley will make that motion. The council approves a letter from the mayor to be sent to the province in support of Inisvile's application to the Rural Renewal Stream to become a designated community.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, great. Thank you, Manager Shaw, for bringing that forward. And next, we're going to eight point one with Manager Leith and the Centennial Park Gate.
Afternoon, councilwoman. So the purpose provides the estimated cost of the installation of an automatic gate, additional fencing and signage to Centennial Parking Lot. Background, on June sixth council meeting, council tabled motions in relation to Centennial Park. The council tables this item pending a quote for the recommended entrance gate. Council requested that administration look at the costs in relation to the installation of a gate to the parking lot. The gate would prevent access to the parking lot at times to be determined, with the intent to reduce the reported antisocial behavior late evenings and at night. The quote was received, has an option for solar power and a one-directional sensor to allow vehicles to exit if vehicle remains in the parking lot after closing. The quote also includes potential for some cosmetic upgrades to include town logo and or park name on the installation of the gates. A local vendor is currently looking at the end of July in respect of work streams to provide that installation. The gate preliminary specification is a powered thirty-six-inch-high bar gate with a seven-day timer and additional fencing to the south side to prevent unauthorized access. Approximately twenty to twenty-eight thousand, dependent on the style and trenching requirements. Breakdown there of the costs associated, so the actual gate supplied and fitted is the fifteen thousand dollars. Fencing and postwork with cable, approximately four thousand. Sinage, anywhere from one thousand to three thousand, dependent on the style and nature of the signage, and the trenching and power hookups. Total budget comes in at around twenty-seven thousand. With the initial action item of installing a gated Centennial Park being tabled, council has recommended to determine if the Centennial Park and Lot should be secured by a gate. This report demonstrates a preliminary budget ranging from twenty thousand to twenty-eight thousand, dependent on what form of gate council is expecting. The recommended action is dependent on council's expectations and desire if the gate should be installed. Options to accept this report's information, to approve the installation of a Centennial Park parking lot security gate and accompanying security infrastructure up to the budget amount of twenty-seven thousand to be funded from the Centennial Park Park Reserve. The reserve currently sits at hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars to provide direction as determined by council.
Okay, thank you, Manager Leith. So I think we'll have some discussion around this before any motions are made. And I reached out to a area resident today, a very level-headed person, to kind of get some feedback as to what's been going on the last, say, three weeks. Seems to be the noise earlier in the evening has diminished, but still issues overnight. So last night, there was a call to the RCMP, a noise complaint. So I I guess I will ask council, you know, how do we, you know, make that area livable for people where their evenings or nighttime is not being disrupted? And without putting a gate on, let me put it that way. Counselor Heistad?
Your worship, thanks for the opportunity to speak on this. I, and how I'm looking at this in the big picture for us is is community policing. And I appreciate Manager Leith for bringing this information forward. I I can see the residents being very frustrated, but I do think that there has been improvements with, you know, how we've been handling things. I look at signage and making sure that we, you know, we do our best with the presence. I I think that goes a long way in in how we I think that goes a long way in, in how we treat young people, anybody that's using that park itself. I think the gate part, at the end of the day, would be the last resort to us. That's how I'm looking at it. And a perfect example is, I was listening to a conversation at the policing committee, or actually the RCMP presentation. And this stuff not only happens at Centennial Park, it happens at the schools, it happens all throughout the town. And how do we best put the signage up, have different CCTV camera capabilities to identify issued areas? I think that will improve, you know, Centennial Park itself. But I think that's a step that we should go towards rather than doing the gate right off the hop. And I empathize with all those residents up and down that strip there. And it's how do we coordinate that effort with them and the RCMP? So, that's what I'd like to kick off for our discussion.
Yep, no, and those are good comments. And, you know, I would just say that we've been dealing with this for probably two to three years now. This isn't new. And so, we went to the CCTV cameras to try, see if that would quieten things down. But, you know, and I'm not sure I'm, you know, let's just put a gate on and lock at 11 o'clock at night. But how do we get to the point where, I mean, I feel so bad for the residents that are having to, or they're getting woke up in the middle of the night and having to respond and having to phone RCMP. You know, are there things we can do other than that, right? Because the, the resources aren't there to be patrolling all night a park or a school. So, anybody else have any thoughts? Do we put up more signs, say, please, please be quiet?
I honestly, sorry, your worship, I should ask before you go.
No, it's okay.
I think signage saying that you need to be out at a park at a certain time and, and do it with, you know, with, you know, sunrise, you know, sunset, or however we can time it. But I, I look at the park as such a great, like, when I'm out early in the morning, there's one, I know one individual's, she's there by 5:30, 5:45 with her dog. And it's not one person, there's usually two. And that are, that are going out walking. And I think that if we make our town restrictive and, and not a fun, we're talking about welcoming, right? It's that balance. And that's the tough part. It's, it's really difficult. And I think that, you know, I'd rather, myself personally, I know it's $28,000, $20,000, $28,000. I'd rather see us, community policing, you know, having those conversations with the residents around there, how they can feel like they're being listened to. And I think that we have done a good job, you know, from my standpoint, being on council. But, you know, people with their bad behaviors, they're always going to be there too. And that's the unfortunate part. When I started chirping about this months ago about garbage, that was just one, you know, example. There's garbage all over town. And I think Counselor Bates says, you know, he's like, there's always going to be that in our community. I know we've had that chat back and forth, but it's, it's making people responsible. And any, anything that I've done in my past council life or this current council life, it goes a long way, having those, one of those conversations with people. They feel like they're being heard. And how do we, how do we assure them that we're leading this? And I just don't think a gate right now is, is going to help us with that.
And I guess that's my question. How do we ensure to the residents that they're being heard and they're not going to be disrupted anymore? Counselor Dunham?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley.
Go ahead.
I guess, you know, I'm trying to look at it through two different lenses, myself as an adult, and then as a kid growing up in Calgary who lived beside Glenmore Park, and what we did, and taking my little Volkswagen GTI into the park. And just understanding, you know, that there were gates on certain parks and that over time it evolved. And the other thing that I found is that these, these gathering areas are cyclical. They changed. And I think that's the one thing. And it's, if it was, I mean, where I live, we have some issues with, with, with noise and certain things. And we have adapted within our household by moving into the basement, which doesn't work for everyone. But the, I guess, if we put up a gate, aren't they just going to move somewhere else? And I want to respect those people that are there and understand the noise and what it's doing and how it's affecting their life. And like I said, I don't want to see a gate go in there. But the other thing we need to look at as well is that if a few people do go to the park, there is a street right there to park on as well. And it's, you know, just walking across a parking lot to gain access to the dog park. So, how much longer is that walk? And I don't have an answer. I'm trying to look at it through several different ways. I'm just trying to, trying to explore what it looks like. And if we put a gate up, where are they going to move to next? What are we going to have to do then in that area? So much signage goes up. Who's actually reading that signage?
Counselor Wing?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Yeah, I would, I concur with both of my colleagues. Put up, put up a fence, put up a gate, people will just move the behavior somewhere else. What we have is a behavior issue. And so, I would rather see us, if we're going to spend $20,000 or $25,000, I would rather invest it with perhaps our policing committee in the creation of some programs that start to eliminate the problem as opposed to just moving it around from place to place. Perhaps, you know, programming that could address, address our safe and welcoming community on a broader scale. Community policing might be part of it. Enhanced, enhanced patrolling at sort of those danger hours when we know that there are people out at 2:00 in the morning or whatever. I don't, I don't know what those, I think we have a great committee with some good thinking at that table. And so, maybe we just go back to them to say, we are willing to invest some resources here. But building, building a gate and putting up a sign other than saying, please behave appropriately, like, people don't read signs. I don't read signs. So, I would just prefer we get busy with some programs and start to be more proactive.
Manager Leith, do you have any suggestions? I am too bad Staff Sergeant Madichuk wasn't still here.
So, I know previously with the actions that were tabled, some of those actions, I believe, would certainly give tools for enforcement and education, certainly that quiet time piece. You know, the park's bylaw is quite dated. We said the last revision, I believe, I think off the top of my head was 2006. So, to update that, to provide the ability to enforce and say, look, it's quiet time, that you're shutting it down, it's 10 o'clock. A clear expectation that there has to be consideration to the neighborhood outside of being able to turn around and lock the park up. Also, the ability to, those additional cameras would give 360 degrees. So, the, the ability for the community to report crimes and issues there more frequently to allow us to address them straight away. I believe we have been effective on the majority of those reporting pieces.
Counselor Bates?
So, as we've led up to this, I mean, we had the presentation with Manager Leith and, and the RCMP saying that they thought they'd made some breakthroughs and, and that would help. It's never going to go away. But now that we know it's $28,000 to build a gate, I guess we could, we can do that almost any time as long as we anticipate winter and whatever trenching is needed. So, perhaps, these things are getting in the paper. And some of the perpetrators are no doubt reading them. And I think they've been contacted directly, some of them. And who knows, if there's one tomorrow, they may get a, they may get a nice mailer with their license plate from one of the cameras. So, I guess my opinion would be to give it a little more time. There's no reason why we can't revisit this a month from now even and say, did we make progress? And if we didn't, then no problem, I'm putting it in. It's just, yeah, that's my thoughts.
So, what kind of resources are there, Manager Leith, say, after 11 o'clock in Innisville?
So, after 11 o'clock currently is RCMP. So, it's either, if it's an emergency issue, it's a 911 call. And if it's a non-emergency, it's a complaint, it's through the back line number. Or to ring the town as a back in that line reporting number, which we have 24 hour monitoring. And then that call is fed through to Protective Services the next morning to review the footage.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Heistad?
Yeah, I would agree with Counselor Bates is, you know, we don't have to, to do this today. It's, and I think there was some really good suggestions with working with the policing committee. I think that's, that's really important. I do see that there's a community organizing type effort that we should be doing with citizens that maybe live within that two block radius. Or we, we send them notice and say, hey, we want to meet you. We want to talk about the park. There's issues. We want you to be the eyes and the ears for us as a community. And I'll give you a perfect example. As the other, the weekend was when we lost, there was a mural on the heist, the John Wilson, or the fence for the schools. And a piece of that art went missing while, I think there was hundreds of people commenting on that, how disappointed they were because it was part of the community. And kids had made it, and schools were involved. And I believe that that showed up. The mural did show, it came back the next day. So, whoever had taken it had heard in the community that, you know, people are watching you, and their, their eyes are on you. And I, I see that if we can do that in specific areas where you hit a two to three, you know, block radius, having those conversations. And, and I think that's the purpose of the police, the committee as well. Some of the work that we can do is to, to have that community organizing mandate and opportunity to talk to the people to be the eyes and the ears. We talk about it all the time. And then people get pissed off because, well, I gotta call, I gotta call the RCMP, or I gotta go call the town. Well, it's not going to take you a lot of effort to do so. And I think that's, that's how I see this issue right now. Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, this is a new issue. This is an issue where people built a dream home in Innisville, they ended up selling it because the noise was so intense. And they were getting backlash from people. And I've had emails and phone calls. I have shared those emails with council. So, people want something done. And I don't mind going to the Police and Safe Community Committee. It was there. And they looked at it. And nothing came out of that meeting. Back to council for recommendations. So, I guess as long as something is going to get done and move forward, and we're going to have some concrete solutions, that's fine. But we need to understand that residents are upset because they've had enough, because it's not a month long ordeal. This is two year, three year long ordeal. So, that's what, people are frustrated.
So, I have a suggestion. The recommended motion here was that we accept the information. Perhaps I'm suggesting that we accept the information and then put a specific date that we look right back at this. And if we're not satisfied with the current state of events, then we can advance it to do it. That's just a suggestion. I'm not going to pick the time. It probably should be something, I'm going to guess, less than two months or two months? Just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. I think everybody said some really important things here today. I think it's true that if you, if you block one area up, the youth are going to find another area. So, it's just kind of transporting the problem somewhere else. But I think that the residents also need to know that we're doing something. But I have a question. And that is, has the incidence of those complaints or the, you know, the incidence of youth being there, have those decreased since COVID has kind of stopped being such an issue? And they can convene in other places?
Without having access to the figures, my personal impression of it is certainly the middle two years with COVID. That, that problem certainly did come to the fore from with the youth having no opportunity to, to gather, play sports, et cetera. So, that's my, without having the stats in front of me, I would have to say COVID didn't have a contribution towards that.
So, would you like to make the motion, Counselor Bates?
Well, I can. I don't, I'd make sure that everybody's kind of, what frame of mind. Well, I would move that we accept this for information. And let's see, specifically, if we could gather, because I know it's reduced, if we could gather some of those stats and then monitor them even for the next month, and then revisit this and see if we want to do something further. I would make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Further comments? Counselor Harrison?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Barkley. Just a question through to Manager Leith. Do we know why the kids are, the youth are gathering there? And a second question to the policing committee would be, you have a youth person on your committee. Has that question been asked of them? Why are you gathering at Centennial Park? Because at one time, Dodds Lake was a gathering place. And, you know, I sort of wander around the house at, you know, 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. And the youth have seemed to go away at Dodds Lake that late at night. So, there must be a reason. I don't know if it's RCMP patrols or, or what it is. But has that question been asked? And why are they gathering there? Or is there other places? Because I, I agree there, you know, we heard at the RCMP open house that they gather at the school parking lot. And myself, growing up as a kid, we gathered. So, where do we, where do we go with, with them? Is there a place in town that we could suggest? Maybe it's, I don't know, maybe it's in the county. I don't know. But, but, but it seems like it's a noise level, right? And why are they going there? Because it's nothing special at 2:00 in the morning, other than a place to park your car and squeal your tires. You know, they're going to do that on Main Street. I've seen black marks up and down Main Street in the mornings. So, yeah, it's, I would ask the youth member on your committee, why? Why are they going there? And are they the same people that sort of frequent there? Are they the same, same group? Lots of questions there. Thank you.
Your worship, through to Counselor Harrison. What we see is that, or we've seen over the last three years, and obviously, we have had some social impacts over with COVID with that. Is that 15 to 17 year age group, with a group that are generally gathering there? It's a lit, safe place as such. Open liquor is easily identified, and use of drugs is easily identified by RCMP if that were to be occurring there. So, it is the perception it's a safe place. The new drivers like to go and park up with their vehicles that they have there. That seems to be the general. If we move around the community, there's other locations such as the back of the arena, where it's less lit and less observed, where other activities are seen to go on. So, dependence on the groups and the, what they want to do and where they want to go is that, that's the, they have different locations in the community where they will gather socially to meet up and hang out.
It's a complex, it's complex.
This will be my last comment. But with this subject is, we've talked about, you know, in the past hours, like, you know, for the bylaw work and flexible hours and that. Is that a, is that a direction that we want to go? Or maybe you, you know, I'm not saying hire more staff, but we may need that one day. Like, you know, I, I don't know. It's, and I, and I understand why Mayor Barkley, you know, is, is, you know, being pretty direct about the, the, you know, the, the family that's been, you know, tried to deal with it for the past couple of years, right? So, is there that option to offer that flexibility? And I know that RCMP is going to be doing the, the bike thing too this summer, so.
Yeah, your worship, through to Counselor Heistad. We, we work closely in joint force operations. And we try to work things around. So, we have done late night Friday patrols with RCMP. The bike patrols come in. Yeah, it's a, it's a joint operation really with regard to both RCMP and municipal enforcement. Unfortunately, we only have two officers right now, and they are offset to turn around and provide more effective coverage through the summer period. Yeah, it would be nice to increase.
Seeing that, Mayor Barkley, Counselor Heistad, does council wish to upgrade the bylaw or look at options within the framework of a or look at options within the framework of a bylaw? Maybe put a little bit of meat in there to help enforcements, whether it's curfew or timing, that we can, certainly it's outdated, I'd advise you to give us that direction. You may as well look at an updated bylaw, that you can look at options on what you want to do with, within that bylaw.
So, I guess question I have, we just updated our community standards bylaw, where we tend to, I thought we put a little more meat in it with, you know, fines and noise and harassment and all that kind of stuff, so I guess that, you know, is that kind of the, the overarching bylaw for the community, and the park bylaw sits underneath that, or?
So, the, the park bylaw sits basically and relates to the parks, what can and can't be do, uh, done, such as camping, noise, times of service, unless we build in exemptions for certain functions, so it, it's a standalone that applies strictly to our park areas.
May I add, Mayor Barkley, it's, it's another tool, it's to help enforcement, and I've never been enforcement, but worked with the Hugarian team, is the more tools they have, the ability, they can, they can work within a situation.
Yep, sure. Well, we have one motion on the floor here, from Counselor Bates, maybe we should vote on that first, so, all in favor? Okay, unanimous, and then somebody wants to make a motion to direct administration to bring forward the park bylaw for updating, reviewing?
Mayor Barkley, I would make that motion, please.
Thank you, Counselor Wing, all in favor? Okay. Thank you, Manager Leith. And we were all young once, honest. So we'll move into 9.1, Correspondence and Information. Have somebody please make a motion to accept this as information?
I'll make that motion, Mayor Barkley.
Okay, thank you, all in favor? Okay, and we will start our roundtable with Counselor Heistad today.
Okay, I should have, I'm gonna cause some trouble, but is that all right? I do want to say, if I think of this last week, the best part was doing the drag clean and being involved with Pride, and I want to commend Dale and Sean and the work that the Pride Committee did this, this weekend, I think that it was a great event, from what I'd seen when I was there, and money was raised for two good causes, I believe, right? Three, three in total, so that was very positive, and then being at Equest today was really good, and I'm just trying to remember the rest of the week, but it's, but I, I just wanna, I want to say how proud I am to be on this council and see, you know, everybody kicking around that weekend, and, and just being part of it in one way or another, as a team, and I think that says a lot about the group around here and our administration as well, and I want to thank you for that. The, the other thing that I do want to add, and this is where, I was gonna add it on the agenda, but I didn't, and I thought I'd keep it at roundtable, FCM board, or, or committee rep, committee representatives can apply by June 30th to, to sit on committees at FCM. I know myself, when I first started on council, I can remember sitting around the table, showing off FCM pamphlets and saying, this is cool stuff, and in Isvale, we didn't jump on board until we had some really progressive councils the last couple of terms that said, hey, we should be going to this. So, what I was going to ask, I would like to apply, but I need a recommendation that if you are accepted for any of the committees, that a motion that would say that it would pay any expenses that would need to be incurred if I had to travel anywhere. From my understanding, the good portion of the meetings are virtual, but there is the odd one where you may have to go somewhere in the country to do so, but I know for myself and my work, I, I like to do virtual, but I do, I do see value in going to meet committee members at least once a year, so, so I'd need a motion of some kind, recognizing that the town would support me.
Kate, do you have a committee in mind?
I think there's a bunch, how I understand it is, you apply and then they place you on committees by your, by your skill set. So, I'll give you an example.
Have you seen Mamma Mia?
Yeah, they, they actually have a skills matrix that they use with some of the committees, and I, and I've heard of that, I've actually asked when I was in Regina, I actually met with one of the, the directors of one of the committees, and they said they look at your resume and your skills matrix, and they look at where you, you fit, so, Mamma Mia, I'm in trouble. My, my.
Mayor Barkley, I would make a motion then to support Counselor Heistad's application to MCA, and on, for a committee, and upon acceptance, supporting his activities as appropriate.
Being motherly, may I ask you a question? Do you have time?
Yeah, I think I do.
You sure?
Yeah.
Because I know you have some challenges with this.
I have challenges, I have challenges.
With getting to council stuff, right?
Depends on, it depends on.
I know you've got a full-time job, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll use FCM as an example, I took off my own personal time for that, and I think that the dates are all in there, and what I've looked at so far, it looks appropriate, but if, you know, I'll go through the application, and once it gets through, I'll make that determination as if it's the right fit or not.
For sure, sounds good. Just trying to look out for you, Mamma Mia. Counselor Bates?
So, yeah, I wasn't anticipating that you would be asking for that, but I wanted to discuss FCM at some point, and I'm not sure if this is the right time, and what, we're three days from your, is there any way that we could send them something that says we're discussing your support, and that would keep the window open for you to apply? That, that's my question, because I, I think we need to look at the whole thing. I had the opportunity on the Water Commission, it was pure happenstance, somebody brought it up, and one, one of the communities was not there because the rep was not at the commission that day, none of the other communities even sent a person to FCM this, this term, and I, I heard things like, the maximum number of people that showed up for votes was 300 and some out of 1,200 that were there. Some of these communities are even questioning how much they're going to, you know, attend Alberta municipalities, you know, at some point, what is the, I guess what, what I see is other communities are getting more concerned about financial commitments, and I would like to know if we're gonna actually vote today, I would like to know what the potential financial commitment would be to FCM on your behalf, to vote on. Just my personal feeling. I, I, I would have thought you would have to kind of say which committees, whether it's a Western committee, or whatever, the, obviously the potential travel need would be drastically different on some committees than others, so that's a big, long rambling bunch of stuff, but I find it kind of hard to, to make that decision with five minutes' notice, and I'm still reflecting, I'm starting to look at some of the expenses that we, again, I'm not singling out this situation, I'm guessing that every time, every time we approve about $1,500 for anything, we've used up one tax base in Isvale, because I haven't heard what our average tax base is, once you take out the education, and we're gonna have to start to be, I think, very sensitive to some of this as we go forth, because I think we're heading for some tight situations financially, and I see our fellow communities debating stuff that's back and forth. Yeah, just a point.
Counselor Heistad?
Yeah, I, I didn't want to get into a full debate on FCM, but what I'll say about FCM is, when Don and I were there, we were present for that, that, those pieces. As to the cost and that, I'm more than willing to put in my own time and actually just do virtual, like, that's where I'm go, like, your costs are gonna be, you, you don't have to pay me a per diem, a, as is, if, if I was, say if it was to Ottawa for a few days, then you get your, your travel and your expenses, right? But I, I think to be prudent, it'd be to do virtual at the end of the day, or if the vote, if, if you choose not to vote on it this year, maybe then it's next year that I apply. You know, I, I'm not gonna start, I'm not gonna be upset if, if council does not approve, but I, I do want to be upfront that my, my attendance at FCM, I was fully committed, so.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley, question through to Counselor Heistad. I know you said that they have a skills matrix, and curious to know kind of what you're interested in, what committee you're interested in, and then I'm also wondering, if council goes ahead and votes for, votes to agree to pay Counselor Heistad's travel expenses, if he sits on a committee, would, would that preclude any of the rest of us from attending the conference in future years? No, okay.
So, the committee selection is pretty, pretty limited, it's just an application process, and then they go through that, from what I understand, what I, I've gone through on their website, which is pretty shitty, to be truthful, and the, the only travel that, the dates they give for, say, for example, Ottawa would be November 2022, but from my understanding, talking to Mike Yarzow, that option for virtual is, is wide open, so for me, I don't, I don't need another trip to Ottawa, I've, I've partied on Spark Street, and I've done all the fun things in life, and I don't need to do Mamma Mia in Ottawa, so.
Counselor Harrison?
Yeah, I think there is value in FCM, and, you know, I support Counselor Heistad, you know, furthering education and getting to the big table. And through to Counselor Bates on the other municipalities questioning the value of committees or, or FCM, I think FCM, the administration there, I sense that this is coming from all over Canada, everybody's tight for money, and I would expect that they would, at every committee meeting, and I got that sense at the, at the convention, when they were giving their committee reports, that a lot of it, or most of it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor Heistad, was done virtually, and with the technology that we have now, I would expect, particularly when you're flying five, six hours across the country, that they're gonna try and do it as, as easily as possible, so to me, it might be a, worth a call in the next couple of days, or the next day, Counselor Heistad, just to, just to get a sense of what they're gonna be conducting these meetings, are they gonna be mostly virtual? You know, maybe your first one will be a meet and greet, and, you know, everybody get to know everybody, but after that, your regular monthly meetings probably, I would expect, will be virtual, but I would, I'll certainly support your, your application to apply for a committee, and, and maybe we can restrict it to, you know, one trip or something to Ottawa.
No, Counselor Heistad, would you be expected to attend FCM every year, being on a committee?
No, I don't believe all the committee members had been there, that's my understanding, talking to Mary Yarzow, and, and good portion of the meetings were virtual.
Yeah, you know, and maybe, I mean, a conversation for another day, but, you know, we've, last term even, okay, we're going to take two councils and a CEO to, to FCM, and, you know, maybe, I, I know some other communities do this, they, they give everybody an allowance, and if you want to go to FCM, then go, if you want to go someplace else, then go, as opposed to, I'm gonna make you go this year, and you don't really want to go, but maybe you want to go every year, so, you know, it would just kind of open things up and let people pick and choose what they want to participate in, and I always think you, you get out of, you get out of what you put into, and only went to FCM once, and, and was good, I haven't heard any negative comments from this year, but I haven't asked, like, specifically, really, so. Did you want to add something?
No, I, I think the only thing is, is I'll, I can, you know, loop back with Michael Yarzow again, and, yeah, my intent was to, to look at this, at, at the big picture for all of us, actually, and I think, I like your suggestion, as maybe we take a look at what we're doing professionally, you know, sitting around the table, and what's gonna be the best fit for all of us, maybe, I don't know, because we are taking on quite a bit lately, and you can only burn, you know, you can only do, burn the candle on both ends for so long, right? So, appreciate the discussion, thanks.
Okay, so we have a, a motion on the table to, I'm sorry, Counselor Bates, I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
If, so if we're gonna vote, I'd like to know the number I'm voting on, I don't want to just say yes, no, I'd like to have some kind of a guideline as to what I'm voting on, am I voting on a potential $1,000 expenditure, or $10,000 expenditure?
How about this, I'm gonna motion, we got a motion already, I'll speak to it, I'll, I'll motion to table until next year, so that I have the, all the details in, before me, I'm good with that, thanks. So we get a motion, motion to table.
Okay, so is there only one application per year, process per year, or every quarter? Surprising, okay. All right, well, we have a new motion then to table for a year, so all in favor? Counselor Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Fairly quiet week, I attended the RCMP Town Hall, which was, I'm a little disappointed that with the turnout, I thought there would be more people, or more participants, but overall, the discussion was good, I took a few things away. I also attended both days, not total days, but both days, the Pride event, both Saturday and Sunday, and again, I echo Counselor Heistad's, kudos to Counselor Dunham and, and the committee that put that together, and I think that's, that's about it, yep.
Thank you, Counselor Maseros.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I agree, RCMP Town Hall was a little disappointing, who knows if that was because of the rain, or maybe we need to think about how to market better that opportunity for the citizens. Pride was awesome, and the opportunity to go to lunch with Senator Paul Simmons, and, was it Simons, Simons, and, and to listen to Gavin's grandkids, who are very talented singers, and the Planning Commission, you know, Parkland, Parkland, okay, PCPS, Parkland Commission Planning. They had, they had their AGM this morning, which I attended, and it was great to be at the Equus, and that's it for me, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Dunham.
Thank you. Tuesday, I attended the Recreation Aquatic Center project discussion, we had a presentation from Group Two, Shape Architecture, Chandros was here, and KTJ Consulting, I liked the presentation, it was interesting to hear the pros and cons as presented by the professionals through their evaluation, I really appreciated all the council feedback, it was a good opportunity for us to really let our, what our vision is, and also what the community has spoken to us, I look forward to see what they come back with, and I really would like to see that maybe we could do a site visit with the architects and the construction company, because I think it's important to, to be able to be in, in the spaces and walk around and discuss, rather than just looking something in two dimension, it would also be great if we can still try and pursue going and seeing some, some of our neighbors' facilities. On Wednesday, I was able to attend the Didsbury Alberta Municipalities Summer Municipal Leaders Caucus, it was great that they're continuing the conversation on the formula for the LGF allocation, hopefully our feedback is not lost when they present to the provincial government. It was great to see the work, that the welcoming inclusive communities through them is done through 2016 to date, and it was great to hear more about, and. And it was great to hear more about and what they might do with between AB Munis and RME and their history and potential joint advocacy. On Thursday, we had the Community Economic Development Advisory Group meeting, which was fantastic. Several items there on presentations from Manager Shaw. It was great that there's the finalization of the town Innisfail Chamber of Member Understanding is here. As a council, we've already heard about the Future Energy Futures Lab transition. We were also presented that. We got working group update, second and third quarter work plan update. We had a good presentation on incentivizing development, a business case on dropping minimum parking requirements, which I think we're going to hear a little bit more about here in the next coming weeks. As well as the lead protocol civic web template, the database that they've corrected and just the the data that's going to be able to come out of that, I think is really important and will do well for our town. And it was great to hear from Eric and the brand guidelines. There was some great feedback on that and I am really interested in to see what they come back with on round two. Thursday evening after that, we had the obviously the Innisfail RCMP Town Hall. Unfortunately, I was only attend shortly because my basement decided to turn into a swimming pool. And then on the weekend, I just want to thank everybody from council and administration that was able to attend the Pride celebration. It was an incredible couple of days. And I think the thing that speaks most to me about the weekend was seeing the youth in our community have a place where they felt they belonged and that they were accepted and loved. And I think it's so important that we represent not just certain demographics within the community, but everyone, and we embrace all of it. And I think as a council, through business visits and all the engagements that we do is that we do that, that we are very, very inclusive. And I just want to commend you all, so that's it for me.
Counselor Wing.
Did you go home and have a nap after all that? It was a busy week. Actually, it was a busy week. So since our since our last meeting last Monday, I've participated in several meetings and conversations regarding the Chamber of Commerce and its role within the town's Community Economic Development Plan, as well as some chamber board matters. So we've had, there's been lots of conversations relative to that. I too very much enjoyed our meeting with Chandos and Group Two last Tuesday relative to the Recreation and Aquatic Facilities. I appreciate the level of planning that we'll roll out through the integrated integrated project delivery. I've had a had a couple of conversations on the weekend from my from former colleagues. We used IPD at the college when we built a residence there. And I think I think it's just going to elevate the level of planning, but future opportunities for the town moving forward as well. So I'm excited about that. I too would appreciate following up relative to a facility tour. And I like the idea very much of having the tour led by the architects and that construction teams just to sort of get us out into the region and get us thinking a little bit broader, maybe or differently. I don't know, just affirming what what the direction will be that we head in. MPC met last week and approved a business application. And that's what we do, we approve applications. But the committee actually did challenge the process on this a little bit when the application first came to us a few weeks ago. So we engaged the residential community around this particular business application in advance of an approval as opposed to waiting until after the the approval. So I felt better about it. And I think that our business applicant was happy in the end with the way the whole process worked out. So I enjoyed that. The Summer Municipal Leaders Caucus in Didsbury was, there were some very interesting presentations from Alberta municipalities, good networking opportunities, of course. And yeah, lots of good conversation, certainly the challenges. As Counselor Dunham laid out earlier, are, you know, very real for all of us. So definitely need to keep them on the table. I, the RCMP Town Hall, absolutely informative and interesting. In spite of the low attendance, I was disappointed with the people with the numbers. But we had, you know, it was one of those rainy nights where you had to take a boat down to the Legion anyways. So but so in spite of low attendance, I would like us to see how, I would like to see us hold Town Hall meetings more regularly. So giving the community the opportunity to come and get the information and then have a conversation with council and administration. I think that's just important. And then, yes, the count, the meeting with at the Equus Board this morning was very interesting. And thanks to administration for arranging that.
Thank you, Counselor Bates.
It's time for you, time for your nap. So I did watch the aquatic engagement recording from one end to the other. And it's actually quite neat to to do that from that perspective and not have the opportunity to participate because you really pay attention. I still see a bit of a long tunnel before the light, but I look forward to the next step. I attended the RCMP Town Hall and and echo the the observation of the of the lack of public. My experience with, I I would absolutely encourage more Town Halls. My experiences, they aren't well attended. It just seems to, this seems to be the way it is. Perhaps it's a signal that people are relatively happy. I'm not sure. Now I do plan to attend the Enhance Energy when it gets rescheduled. I did attend the a portion of the Sunday portion of the Pride. And it was enlightening to me to hear a couple of the speakers. And of course, I had pride in the in the performance of my grandkids. And I've recorded most of that. So if you want to see some of the content of what they, and that was all them. That wasn't adults telling them what to do. So it was pretty neat, the content that they put out there. So I feel I caught most of the important stuff. Come Wednesday, I won't have visitor distraction anymore. And to Counselor Heistad that we just put off for a year, I would say that year is October when that's only four months. And then introduce the subject when the budget is coming back. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So attended the Rec Aquatic Center discussion last week, the Alberta Munis Summer Leaders Caucus in Didsbury. Had a conversation, Dr. Malcolm Campbell reached out to to me, having a conversation around mental health, which was quite timely considering we just had that conversation at council. He's very interested if we do move forward with a round table. And he would certainly bring in some more of his colleagues and and partners that that he works with. It was very interesting to see his insight as he is the chief of mental health. I'm not sure what his title is at at Red Deer Hospital and of course, lives in Innisfail. Community Economic Development Chamber Town Meeting Working Group at noon on Thursday. And then the Community Economic Development Advisory Group later that afternoon. And the RCMP engagement that evening. Lunch with Senator Simons, which was excellent. And of course, attended Pride both Saturday and Sunday. And I was out at the Neil Hill Valley 4H Beef last evening for dinner and awards. So was presented with a check of $8,812.50 to go towards the Halleport project. So thank you so much, Director Jenkins. I know you're a very integral part of that club. And it's just great to see that amount of money coming to the community. And I just want to comment on the weekend and promised Dale I'll try not to cry this time. But I I think what what came to light for me, and it it does from time to time, what a privilege it is to sit in these chairs. And we have an opportunity to make an impact on all sorts of people, young people, people that have been marginalized. I had so many people come up to me on the weekend, young people, who said, thank you so much for your words and thank you for saying that I belong here. And so we have to continue this work and make sure that everybody does belong and that we, you know, say true to our values that we've defined in our strategic plan. That word belonging, I think, is so important. And it was, I think, really great to see Senator Simons do a social media post on Twitter that she had been in Innisfail in a loving, compassionate, inclusive community on Saturday. And that was nice to see. And it's been a a long two years in many ways for this community. And it's so great to see the positivity and and the love that was shared over the weekend. And and we do have video, of course, that will last a lifetime that will probably never go away. So never. It is, yeah, yeah. So thank you to Counselor Bates's grandchildren because they're wonderful performers. And of course, thank you to Counselor Heistad, who's also a wonderful performer, and to Brad from Operations and Jay Kemp. And Sean, oh, yeah, Sean, of course, yeah, sorry. Yeah, Sean, because, yeah, yeah, because that was a lot of fun. So and we've also put a name forth for next year to join the Fab Four. So we'll move.
Mayor Barclay. With respect to your announcement about the 4H Club contributions. And we also, at least I saw it on the electronic version, but I think we should send a personal formal apology. Thank you, sorry, for both the Halleport and the hospital.
Well, we will send it for the Halleport. The the hospital went to Jeff Hamel at the hospital.
We can also say thank you on behalf of the town of Innisfail. But for sure, on the, I think we should send one.
And I I'd also like to see us down the road, if possible. We have a grand opening at the Halleport and we bring the bird in and we invite 4H Club. And I and I can say Jeff was at Jeff Hamel, Hamel, the manager of Innisfield Acute Center, was at the awards banquet last night. And we spoke outside afterwards. And he is so grateful that this Halleport has been put back or is getting put back next to the hospital. He said it it was, it is much, much needed. And, you know, they have seen that the issues that have come up because of the the distance that people have to be transported. So that was very reaffirming. So I'm sorry, CEO Becker, yes.
Just want to interject, just on Counselor Heistad's motion, there's table. But if we could just go a little bit further with that motion on table to what is the trigger to bring it back? Is it a date or is it budget? Or if you could just a little bit more directed on that, that'd be great.
Okay, yeah. I'm just trying to think of the words. Tabled until you have further clarification on the the dollar amount that it would incur for anyone to sit on a FCM committee. It's a committee.
For 2023 budget?
I would say 2023 budget. Yes, thanks.
Are you good with that? Okay, all right. I'm afraid to ask this next part. We're going into the open mic session. Does anyone in the gallery have anything to say? Or anyone online, preferably? You may please introduce yourself and turn the microphone on before you do that and.
So I am, I'm Robert McNott. And I want to thank you all. What was went on on the weekend was quite fabulous. Great job, Dale, and everyone else who was involved in it. You know, I think everyone loved it. I'd also like to speak about what Mr. Leith spoke about. And that's the noise and people partying. And I think it's it's kind of common, like, as you said, Gene, we're all young. Mayor Gene, mean Gene Barclay, sorry. We were all young at one point and we all did things. I remember some of the things I did and how it maybe affected me for the better, of course. But I think we, you know, I've got it in my neighborhood also where there's guys that race down the street because there's a campground right there. It's a straightaway and then you get onto 52nd, it's another straightaway. And that campground is, you know, surrounded by roads on three sides. And if I was camping, I wouldn't be happy with people roaring down that street. And I'd really like to suggest we lower the speed limit in town. Sorry, to 40K. I mean, Sylvan Lake does it, Penhold's doing it. You know, it's just for safety. We do have children in the area. As you know, I, some of you know, I have a car that will do 300 kilometers an hour. But I don't speed in town because it's just not appropriate. I don't think you want to have me racing down your street or anyone else. So I guess that's about all I'd like to say. If we could maybe consider that at some point as something that we could look at or do some research on. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And and just so you know, Robert, that, you know, in the past, we have done some, I guess, speed surveys or, you know, we've got speed signs out there that are taking data all the time. And whether they are on or off, they 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 still record. So we did, I think, two, two goes at it on 56th Street, Director Kennedy of last year, the year before. And and, you know, so often, yes, we see some speeders, but so often, the vast majority are not. So do we change everything because of a few people? And does it, it's kind of like the garbage situation. You're always going to have people that are going to speed and just lowering the speed limit. Does that necessarily change the behavior? And I think we've also had conversations around here about, you know, some enforcement and setting up. I believe that there's been some strategies put in place through our emergency services, RCMP, collaborative efforts in in trying to, you know, reduce some of those issues because we do hear them. So I I thank you for bringing that forward because we we do get feedback from people that it, there are problem areas in town. So thank you. Is there anybody online, Kara, that would like to comment? Okay, all right. So I will have somebody make a motion that, I don't know, I guess we'll go to upcoming events. Read the agenda. Okay, I'll have somebody make a motion to accept this as information.
Mayor Barclay, Barclay, I'll make that motion.
Wasn't Berkeley, so it's okay. Thank you. Okay, all in favor. I'll have somebody make a motion to go in camera, please.
I saw a move, Mayor Barclay, that we move in camera.
Okay, thank you all in favor.